There we go. You're good.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's budget hearing and committee, the whole meeting. Today, Monday, October 27, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order at this time. We have met compliance with official notifications. Roll call, please.
Sarah Schuber-McConne.
Here.
Shelley Mullen.
Here.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Laura Gabski.
Here.
Kathy Gomond.
Here.
Nick Schumacher here. President Steve Olson.
Here. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment sign-up sheet by the entrance prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted two, three minutes in length. Comments by members of the public, we do not have any. I'll turn the meeting now over to our Chief Financial Operations Officer, David C.
All right. Well, thanks for everybody for coming. I always anticipated this room's just going to be packed. It was feeling good when I walked in. So this is the, I'm going to go over the budget. You guys should all have that budget booklet that I put together and sent out. There's copies on the desk there. So I think the big thing. Don't do anything. You just hit the spacebar. So back one. So the budget process, one thing is this is not a quick process. It's is, it takes, I said a year here, but it's over a year. I'm already working on 26, 27, and kind of peaking at 27, 28. The big thing though was I gotta get input from people. I get input from the board to see what their priorities are. I get input from all the admins and departments to say, hey, what, what are we looking at? What is the plan out there? What is any big expenses or surprises that I can anticipate? And then also, we do the listening sessions. Those were just put out under the calendar recently. We listen to the, what the teachers and all the other employees are telling us, okay, these are the things we're running into, what we need to prioritize. And then me personally, I just like getting feedback and getting insight from other business managers. So I talked to a lot of them down south. I was just at a, a conference here last week, and I met up with some of them to see, hey, how are you guys looking at this? Am I aligned? And then also, I work with Baird. I actually had a Friday afternoon meeting with them last week to make sure they can look at my numbers one last time and make sure everything's good. So I think the big thing with that budget process is it is a really long and drawn-out process. This month of October is, is terrible for me. So go ahead and click. So the key aspects of the budget. The first one is there is a $325 increase per member. So how much we get per student or FTE. Normal math is you would say we have about 4,000 kids. You multiply that by 325, and we get about $1.3 million. So you would expect, hey, we get $1.3 million more. But that's not school finance math. School finance math is 325 times about 4,000 equals $50,000. So with all our exemptions and everything that kind of artificially hold us up from year to year, we're gaining an additional $50,000 over last year. So I'm sure you know, as we hit inflation, salary increases and everything like that, that $50,000 has gone very fast. The other part of it is, well, first of all, was the state was unprecedented. They did not increase equalization aid year over year. When I understand that's the first time it's happened since like 2010, if not even longer. So what that means is even if the money stays the same, they're going to give out less money, or they're going to give out the same amount of money, which everybody else gets that slight increase up at 325. So automatically, property owners are going to pay. To go along with that, because we're running into declining enrollment, because we're actually pulling our expenses down, and because of our property value, we take an even bigger chew on that equalization aid. So it doesn't even stay flat for us. It's $2.3 million. So right out the gate, there's always, there's automatically going to be an increase of property owners for the $2.3 million. And then there was no increase in the per pupil categorical aid. I don't even know if that gets raised, because ever since I've been here, it's always stayed flat. That's a huge number that we really want to see an increase, because it's outside the revenue limit. But again, it, it stayed flat again for the six-year enrollment. So so here it is. This is the proposed Fund X budget. So you go down, right now, it's you're forecasting a balanced budget. That number can vary or change, because, I mean, it's a guess of what we got going on right now. One thing I really want to emphasize is if you look at the bottom line, you can see our expenses, expenses are dropping from year to year. This is now, this is the first year where I feel like we can see what we're doing as a district and how we're improving as a district and how all that work we're putting in now, we're realizing those gains as far as a reduction in expenses. The unfortunate part, if you look up above farther, our revenue is going down as well. What I anticipate going forward is our revenue actually to flatten out, and then our expenses to gradually increase just because of inflationary reasons. So when we run this balanced budget, it, it can vary depending on, there's a lot of levers at the end of the fiscal year that I can pull depending on what we're going to do. But right now, it's at a, at a balanced budget. So if you want to click the next one. So key enrollment aspects. So school finance, it's made up of how many kids you have, and then what is the per pupil that the state has given. Our revenue, or our ink, our enrollment has decreased by 156. I gave you guys all the details earlier this month about why it's going down between 56 or 58 more kids graduating them or bringing into kindergarten class. The loss of the 4K kids, if you want to hit the spacebar on this. This is a quick breakdown. The one thing I really want to look at this is, the question I get asked sometimes is, are we going to flatten out and get out of this declining enrollment? If you look right now, it looks like our sixth grade class is where that flattened. That's where we get into the 250 range, where I think that's the new kindergarten class we're going to anticipate. That means we got that, you know, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade classes that are all going to graduate out and get replaced by numbers significantly smaller. This year's 12th grade classes is huge. So that is going to be, is going to be a big drop in enrollment next year, just because we're going to look at over 100 kids graduating and only 260 kids replacing. So that's the scary part of it. So you click it. So fund balance, in essence, what the fund balance is, is it is our savings account. It's money we have. It's for cash flow. The general rule is you want to be in the 25 to 33 percent range. When we get further, you guys are going to see that we're actually above that 25 to 33 percent range, but I'll give you some detail on why we're there. So overall, your fund balance increases in two ways. You can either increase it by, you bring in more revenue than expenses, so you have a surplus. So then that money gets put into the bank. The other way is when you reduce your expenses. So as your expenses go down, your fund balance percentage increases, because now instead of being, you know, 30% of $50 million, it's 30% of $48 million. So that, that the, what is it, the denominator changes on you. So that's why we actually, if you look at it when we do this, if you look at your budget booklet, you ought to see our fund balance percentage increases next year, but our fund balance amount, the amount that we actually have, stays flat, and that's because we're reducing our expenses. So you want to click the next one? So this is our fund balance history. And as I said, we're looking at, you know, the projection right now is at 35 percent. So why are we outside the recommended level? Well, the reason we're outside of it is because we know what's going to happen in the future. We have to forecast what's coming forward. So we see the storm on the horizon, and we know it's coming. And what's going to happen is, I'd anticipate a balanced budget, I might even run a little bit of a deficit this year, depending on how we want to run it at the end, very end of the year, because there's some deficits running the deficit. But after that, I don't see how I'm going to put money into the fund balance. We're going to end up running deficits for, for a couple of years after that, especially when you get into the 27, 28 is going to be hard. The 28, 29 is going to be really difficult, especially if we don't get an operational to pass or something changes at the state level. So we need that money. And the thing with a fund balance is just like your savings account. If you put $10,000 away, once you spend it, it's not like you turn around, all right, I'll just replenish it. If you're using your savings account for your day-to-day operations, that means you're not bringing enough revenue to ever, to ever, you know, revitalize it and bring it back. So that's kind of why the, the increase on the fund balance side of it is because I anticipate that number dropping. I would not doubt, if something doesn't change by 28, 29, we will be back in the 20% range. And then once you hit the 20% range, if there's not an increase, we could exhaust our fund balance by 31. So it's just, we just have to make sure that we're looking for the future. So.
And David, weren't we in the 19% right around the construction time? So like 2017, 2018, I think was.
Seventeen, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're significantly down. So the big thing is, so we got that Esser money.
Yeah.
A lot of districts went out and used that Esser money on a lot of, on staff, is what it came down to. And then Esser money went away, but the problems didn't go away. We, as a district, I think we were super conservative on what we did with our Esser money. So we didn't bring in that staff and do a huge deficit after the fact. The other part of it is, we're one of the few districts that had a significant amount of Esser money used last year. And I did that out of a, if I can just keep not use that money until I absolutely needed it, kept being able to, to forego some of it. And that's where, last year, between the $1.3 million we had in Esser, the $2.5 million we had in a referendum, which I couldn't budget upon, because no one knew if it was going to pass, and the $1 million that we got for the sale of Lake Superior, that's why there's a larger plus in the fund balance. So this is Fund 73. This is OPEB. This slide is required. It has to be up every single year. So this is OPEB stuff, is made up of teachers that were hired prior to 2008, who get a post-employment and a, they get a contribution to the HRA, and then also any person that stays on district insurance after they retired from the district. So there's an implicit rate expenses to it. This is not for any teacher that was hired after '08. This is not for any administrators or anything like that, other than the ones that stay on the district insurance after they've retired. What happens is every five years, or every year after somebody, after a teacher retires, a contribution is made to their HRA. Well, those are post-employment. Any teacher that was hired after '08 and every administrator, we prepay it or pay it as we go, so we don't run into a post-employment benefit. These numbers are really hard, because you get into actuaries that need to be created every single, or every two years, and then a reevaluation every year to determine how much money you need out there, because there's a lot of money that flows in and out between the implicit rate and the HRA contribution. So this is one of the levers that I kind of try and pull. Unfortunately, before I was here, they, there wasn't a big push to make contributions to that Fund 73. I'm pushing more to push into that Fund 73 if we have money now, so that when we run out of money, at least maybe we'll be closer to fully funded on that side. So.
Can you remind me, like, say, someone, because they're on federal insurance, you know, a, a previous employee that's retired, are they able to opt back in to this? No, Molly? Okay, thank you.
They're off there.
Okay. How many retirees are on?
I'd have to pull a list for this year, but I think at the end of last year, it was in the high 20s or both. That's what I remember, too.
So that, that implicit rate is, I think the last time I looked at it, it was $300,000. What it is, is what happens is, it's not a direct expense to us. It's all of our health insurance costs more because retirees are on there, and so that has to be accounted for. So that's where, when that extra comes in, Fund 73 has to reimburse Fund X, but we have to give the money to Fund 73. It's just moving money back and forth. But the big thing is, once it cuts to Fund 73, I put a dollar into Fund 73, I can't touch that unless it's paying for that implicit rate or that HRA benefit. So if you want to click the next one. This is the revenue limit worksheet. This is what I think you'll see it all the time. It's all, school finances run is pretty much off of this. So when I go in and tell you these numbers, you know, you're going to see it on the mill rates down on the bottom. We got our, our student enrollment over on the left-hand side. Lots of exemptions, lots of other things that go into the calculations. And if my numbers that I have you guys on the resolution do not match with this one, DPI will send out an emergency email to you saying, hey, you did something illegal. But at the same time, they literally changed this revenue limit worksheet at 3:30 today. Yeah. So on Friday, they made a change for us, or on Thursday, they made a change. They bumped us up. Also, they found three kids that we knows where. And technically, it wasn't supposed to happen, because the only change should be if our person makes that change, if Casey makes that change, and she had not made a change since October 2nd. DPI is starting a new system now, so that makes me nervous. But we're just going to get into November 1st without any more changes. You can click again. This is breakdown of our revenue Fund X. So as you can see, we're at 61% from the state side. And that number is dropping, and that's when that state equalization aid is dropping. The other part of it, which people don't like to hear sometimes, is we are actually pretty heavily aided. We have, we get a lot of money from the state when you compare it to other districts. So it's kind of, it's, it's getting to the point where, you know, we're going to get into that 60, 40 range eventually. But the biggest thing is when we take money, if the state takes money away or stops giving you a certain amount of money, then the property tax have to give it, have to give you that money. The other side, people hear about the federal, that's title, things like that. It's not a big, it's not a big amount. It's, when they, they don't, they don't provide that much to public education, and frankly, it's going down and is really at risk. That's the big worry I have right now, is our, our revenue risk is that federal stuff. And then we have our, our others, which is, you know, ticket sales and, and fees that kids pay for sports that go back into the Fund X side of it. We do look for ways to get more money. We are, we have a grant program out there. We literally encourage the teachers, go find them. I'll go online all the time, just like, hey, what's the cool grant? What are good grants out there that can provide us money? They're just not out there, and the competition is fierce. You talk to Milwaukee, Madison, even, I think O'Clare might have one. They have a grant person. That's their job. Find them, write the grants. Let's do it. We're going to keep going and pushing. I think we have some other tools that might be useful that we can try and make it easier. But when people say, well, just go get a grant, it's not that easy. They're, they're really hard to get. So you click again. This is a breakdown of expenses for Fund X. The big thing I want to push out when this, when I say this is the school budget, it, it's a people budget. Education is a service. And if you look at this right here, it says, all right, 49% of it is salaries and 19% is benefits. That gets you up to 68%. But if you look at, there's that 12% up on the top, that's our transfer, and that's a Fund 27 transfer. That Fund 27 transfer is 6.17 million, and I think 300,000 of it is non-salaried, non-benefits. So in actuality, we're looking at 79% of all our money is going to pay for staff, teachers, and their benefits and everything else. That only leaves 21% to pay for everything else. It's the gas and the buses, that's the heat, the buildings, that's where everything else. So there isn't this huge pool that I can just siphon off. It's like, oh, this is just our discretionary stuff. Our money's going to people. And there, those people are the ones that are inside the classrooms, because we've made a significant reduction on the admin side, and with the goal of not touching anything that's in the classroom. So. So now we get down into the mill rates and the tax levy side of it. So the mill rate's going to be, is projected to be, is 7.65. Tax levy at $27,461,919. This one just gives a quick breakdown of where it gets, how it's split up between the municipalities. The big thing with this is, the state of Wisconsin, the Department of Revenue, tells me how much the value is of every single one of these municipalities. Doesn't matter what Superior assesses their property at. The state doesn't care. They come in and say, all right, Superior, you have 75% of the, I think it's 3.6 billion dollars in there. So you get 75% or 74% of the levy. So it's a simple calculation. It's just 27 million times .74. Superior shares 20,392,000. So the key aspects of the levy, first, the estimated mill rate is going to be 7.65. That's up 81 cents from the $6.84 mill rate from last year. The weird thing, so part of this is, one, it's the money that the state has not given us anymore. Two, you can click. It's the money the state has taken away in their equalization aid. And two, our value of our property fell by 1.6%. When that happened, I had calls from Baird saying, what is going on in Superior? Because that is not the average. The average is 6% or 5% increase across the state. I met with the city and said, hey, guys, what's going on here? Well, there was some stuff on the taxes that shouldn't have been on there. Specifically, they called out the marina and said the marina was on a roll, tax roll. So when I got pulled off, all of a sudden, our property value went down. You get, you can look at it one of two ways. I'm going to look at it the nice way, because everybody says I'm the doom and gloom guy. It means the next year, we're going to get more aid. You want to look at it on the bad side, it means we overpaid, or we got less aid than we should have the last couple of years. Overall, the levy's increasing by $2.48 million, or 9%, from the, from last year. That increase, you can almost trade, trace it directly back to the $2.3 million decrease in state aid, and then also the $174,000 increase in the vouchers. The voucher one totally took me by surprise, did not anticipate getting slammed that hard on that. But that 175,000, so I think that gets us up to around $500,000 in voucher money. That's just, what happens is, the property taxer, the property owners pay it, they give it to me, and then I turn around and give it to them. Or I give it to the state, and the state hands it out. So it just, we're like a pass through. But it is a significant amount, and it keeps increasing. And like I said, the state aid, again, I have to emphasize, went down by 2.3 million, so 7.13%. So in conclusion, the budget presented is grounded in the priorities that the staff committee and board have expressed. Overall, expenses for these school districts have decreased. Tax mill rate will be at $7.65. The tax levy will be 27.4 million. And then once everything gets done and the resolution is passed, tomorrow, I will be getting, I will mail them out to all the municipalities, and I'll actually have, I'll probably make AP person go and hand deliver all those to the municipalities, so we can ensure that we meet all the stringent guidelines that DPI has. So, do you guys have, what questions you guys have?
Do you, is there an average mill rate across the state?
Oh, yeah. I don't have it on with me right now. I can upload it before the end of this meeting. We are actually on the lower end when I've had it in the past. Again, the mill rates, you know, mine only has a really low mill rate, but that's because of the problems. It's huge. So, but I'll get you that before then. For last year, I don't have the chips.
Well, first of all, thank you so very much for all the work that you do throughout, not, you know, just, not only at this crunch time, David, but 365 days, looking out ahead, you know, years at a time and stuff. This is a lot of information, and, and you've always presented it to us that has been very helpful for us to, to understand, not palatable, but the increase of the one, the voucher system. So in that, I will be coming back to the board as we look at changing that resolution and finally getting that meeting set up with the county, so we can talk about putting that on. And you saw in your packet the sample of the tax sheet and everything. So we're looking at putting that information on there, because it is almost, I think it's something like 474,000 or closer to 500,000, which comes directly out of our budget to, to support that. And it's never easy doing this. We've got a responsibility. I think we've been very careful of what we've asked. I know the administration, Amy, has been, and Molly, and everybody that's worked in this board office. So we are, what I would say, shorthanded in this school district. However, she somehow makes it work. And the less impact that it has on the students in our school district, very, very important.
David, you kind of talked on it a little bit, but can you kind of explain again why that, that fund balance, it's looked at as like a savings account, but why we can't just use that to pay for things that we need, right? I mean, we know, right? But can you just kind of explain that again?
People look at it like it's a rainy day fund. All of a sudden, you can just go in there and dip it.
Right. Or, you know, we need new turf. Why can't we just use that? Just like things, things like that. Why can't we use that money for that?
So we can, and we do. That's my cash flow. So that's the money that I use to pay, you know, our payroll. We got, I don't get another equalization aid check until the end of November. We haven't gotten a check since August. So I'm, now I watch my numbers, especially during payroll weeks, to see what we're dropping on our bank account. So we do use that money. The big thing, though, is, like I said, is, once you use that money on a permanent basis, then it's gone. So if we did use it, and let's just say, like, once somebody came to me and said, well, why don't you just drop the tax levy, instead of, instead of increasing that tax levy by 2.3 million, like the state, just use your fund balance. And, and we can do that. But then, we have $2.3 million less in that fund balance, when we know in the next couple of years, we're going to have even less and less and less money. I'm, I'm really nervous. I'm really scared about that 28, 28, 29 school year, because my numbers turned from, you know, green to red. In 29, 30, I'm projecting an $8.5 million deficit. If you only have 16 or 19 million dollars in your fund balance, you're gone, it's empty in two years. Then, at the same time, I'm going to turn around and say, I lost all my money for cash flow. I need to go get money now. I need to get short-term borrowing. And that short-term, short-term borrowing in this economic situation where, right, money is not cheap. And then I go out and get, you know, $5 million to hold on to at a 5% interest, that money is just, it's just gone. It's, you know, in essence, it's a waste, because you're not actually getting anything out of it. You just get the right to use somebody else's money. So.
And it also impacts our, our audit, right, and liabilities. So when we get our, our report at the end of the year, they're looking at our fund balance. That's a really big thing.
Yeah, that's huge on the bond ratings.
Yeah. And then other districts that have dipped into their fund balance, they're in a whole heap of trouble. Like, you don't see them doing quite well once they're emptying that out, because we need that to cover salaries or things like that. So, yeah, that's a great question, Sarah. Thanks for asking that to explain.
I think it'll be interesting, or not interesting, but I'm watching now to see. I know there's some districts that, they don't have a fund balance, and I don't know what they're going to do. I see they're going to have to do some cuts that are just going to be absolutely blown, that are going to be hurt. We, as a district, are making sure that we're being fiscally conservative, so that we don't ever get in that desperate, desperate point that we need to make, things that are significantly going to hurt our kids, just so we can make a payroll. On the good side, we should be really happy about what we're doing with our expenses, how they're trending down. And, I mean, that's been something that, you know, since I started, Amy's always emphasized it. And now, when I'm in this role, I can really see how she's emphasizing it. And there's a lot of districts out there that are actually jealous of what we do. A lot of districts won't rip that Band-Aid off when they need to make those cuts. Where we are willing to make those cuts, I was just in a meeting last week for our future-ready team. And, I mean, the first thing was, hey, we got to be fiscally responsible, figure out ways. Every penny's going to count. So, I mean, it's, you know, and Crystal was leading that meeting, and that, it's across the board. All of our admin understand the situation we're in. And if we just tighten the belt here a little bit, it'll be better for our kids as a whole. So, and I think we should be proud of the fact that all our admin team that's doing that, and specifically the board as well. I mean, you guys get those tough decisions, and I appreciate the fact that you, you trust the numbers that are out there and, and look long-term as opposed to a, a short-term situation. So awesome. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. I guess that, Mr. President, that makes me think of two things too, is just, thank you again to the community for the operational referendum because that's our lifeline for a bit. And then, you know, just as far as the, the voucher schools or charter schools, like, it's where we support, you know, parent choices and education, but there's just different requirements that were held to. And so, public schools should be compensated at a different way because we don't have the option to not provide some of these services. So just want to make that clear. It's, it's not a, we don't want it to be a competitive thing. We just really want to make sure that public schools receive the funding that they need to do what we have to do to educate our kids.
Thank you. All right, moving on the agenda here then, we have two action items coming up. Declaration of the twenty-five, twenty-six school district budget. I remind you that it is final approval tonight. This will not move to Monday. The first resolution, twenty-five, twenty-six budget for the school district of Superior. The administration recommends approval of resolution twenty-five dash oh six, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget for the school district of Superior.
Go ahead.
To approve.
A second.
There is a motion and a second. So the resolution reads as such. Be it resolved that the general fund, including state and federal grants of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget of the school district of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the anticipated sums of fifty-eight million, six hundred fifty thousand, four hundred dollars for revenue and fifty-eight million, six hundred fifty dollars, six hundred fifty thousand dollars, four hundred ten for expenditures. I was just going to say, I knew I was going to get a tongue twister tonight, and there's the first one. Be it further resolved that such expenditures be as set forth in the expenditure budget booklet dated October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five of the school district of Superior, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget information booklet, which pages are incorporated herein by reference. Be it further resolved that the prior service liability of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget of the school district of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin is established in the sums of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, forty-nine dollars for revenue and six hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the debt service fund of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget of the school district of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin is established in the sums of six million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred for revenues and six million, eight hundred five thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the community education of the twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget of the school district of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin is established in the sums of one hundred fifty thousand for revenues and one hundred fifty thousand for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the food service fund of the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget of the school district of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin is established in the anticipated sums of three million, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and six dollars for revenues and three million, ninety-six thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, as approved, be distributed to the proper officials of the towns, villages, and city comprising the school district of Superior. Approved by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior this twenty-seventh day of October, twenty twenty-five. Is there any further discussion?
Well done, again, David.
Roll call vote, please. Sarah Schuber-McCombe.
Aye.
Shelley Mullin.
Aye.
Nick Olson.
Aye.
Laura Gavsky.
Aye.
Catherine Givon.
Aye.
Nick Schumacher.
Aye.
President Steve Olson.
Aye.
Wilson Carey. Next is the School District of Superior tax levy certification. The administration recommends the approval of the resolution twenty-five dash oh seven, School District of Superior Tax Levy Certification. Motion to amend a second. The resolution reads as follows. The twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six tax levy certification for the School District of Superior. Resolution introduced by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior, Wisconsin, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation, management, and administration of the school system for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and authorizing a tax levy to be spread on the tax roll of the City of Superior, Town of Oakland, Town of Parkland, Town of Summit, Town of Superior, Village of Oliver, and Village of Superior municipal bodies, corporate, in Douglas County, Wisconsin, for the years twenty twenty-five. Whereas the Board of Education of the School District of Superior has authorized the sum of fifty-eight million, six hundred fifty thousand, four hundred ten dollars for the general fund, one hundred fifty thousand for the Community Education Fund, and seven million, four hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars for the debt service fund to be appropriated for school purposes as more fully appears in the schedule of appropriations and in the budget of the same Board of Education for the uses and purposes therein expressed, which said budget is hereby made a part of this resolution as fully as if the same were incorporated in full herein. And whereas the aforementioned appropriations of fifty-eight million, six hundred fifty thousand, four hundred ten dollars, one hundred fifty thousand dollars, seven million, four hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars are to be financed as follows. And as you'll see on the board, I'm not going to read through each one of these. And the general fund, the total ends up as thirty-eight million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred forty dollars. And then the appropriations, the percentage of the cities, and then each one of the townships, and the amount of dollars there. So there is your general fund. On the next page, we have the debt service fund, prior service liability, broken out again the same way. Reflects then the fund, the total for fund thirty-eight. The next is a debt service fund, which is total fund thirty-nine. The next is the Community Education Fund, total fund eight. The total tax levy is then listed on the next page of twenty-seven million, four hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred nineteen dollars. And whereas the State Department of Revenue has certified the following equalization valuations. You can see those up on the board. Thank you, Ann, for enlarging that. And that total. Be it further resolved by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior that the school clerk shall ascertain the total of taxes levied for school purposes and shall apportion the levy to the governing bodies within the School District of Superior. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the School District of Superior certify to the clerk of the City of Superior, the clerk of the Town of Oakland, the clerk of the Town of Parkland, the clerk of the Town of Summit, the clerk of the Town of Superior, the clerk of the Village of Oliver, and the clerk of the Village of Superior, their portion or share of the said taxes, and these be entered on the tax roll of each municipal unit. Approved by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior this twenty-seventh day of October, twenty twenty-five. Roll call, please. Sarah Schuber-McCombe.
Aye.
Shelley Mullin.
Aye.
Nick Olson.
Aye.
Laura Gavsky.
Aye.
Catherine Givon.
Aye.
Nick Schumacher.
Aye.
President Steve Olson. Can you take a water? No, I'm good. We're going to move right on because you guys are taking over now. Committee of the whole agenda, action taken at today's meeting is to forward the recommendation for final approval at the next regular school board meeting on Monday, November third, twenty twenty-five. Again, I don't believe we have any comments from the public. Report of our superintendent, she had no action items, no discussion items, informational items. Where'd he go?
There he is.
He's hiding over there. I'd like to welcome back Mr. Ryan Harrelson. Principal of Great Lakes.
Thank you. Oh, it's not. If you want to put it out. I can just tell you to click. All right, so I'm just here for my, just kind of some updates at Great Lakes. Going to go right to the next slide. Couple celebrations. The first one, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on right now, but like, I think of things that we're proud of. So last year was a very big transitional year for us. And the data I put up is related to our A reading assessment that we do fall, winter, spring. It's a comprehension reading assessment. So you can see, if you look at the middle one where it says fall of twenty twenty-four, you're at fifty-seven point one percent above the fortieth percentile or higher. That was down about nine points from the fall of twenty twenty-three. I'm here and I'm so happy to report that we're starting higher than we ever have in the fall of reading. And I'm really excited about that because, as I talked to staff earlier this year, and like some of our continuous improvement goals, we have a chance to, you know, even on the state assessment, maybe get above that seventy percent proficient advance, breaking a previous high. And more importantly, that bottom category I talked about, below basic in the red, maybe getting that to zero. We're down to probably three or four students in the building that are in that category and we're working hard to get them caught up. So that was kind of a nice piece. We'll be happy to, to be able to report out how that progress goes. Cutting to the more important celebration, I guess, launching our therapy dog program in the district. And I want to just take a minute, I have a little second. So Libby is, oh, you're being shy, aren't you? She's shy. Sorry. She's not shy around the kids. So Libby is, she's six months old. So she is actually training in our setting. I know some of the board members have had to meet her. This has been an amazing thing. I think we've talked many, many times about challenges and mental health and not having enough resources. And we always could use more resources, but this was an opportunity to do something to help with that. And she's, she's been amazing. I mean, I can even think of the first couple of days of school. You got those kindergarteners melting down because they're saying bye to mom and dad. And Libby just instinctively like sidles up to them and melts their tears away. We use her in a lot of different ways. If you could switch the slide, Ann. These are just some of the pictures up here. We had the football team out a couple of weeks back. And Terry, if you, Mrs. Bronson, our counselor here, if I miss anything, then you feel free to add in. But she's just become a part of our school climate and culture. End of the day, she's always out there saying goodbye to the kids, sending them off on a good note. She, Mrs. Bronson, you can see some of her group, she's got like pillows and stuff set up. And Libby sits in the middle and it just gives kids talking and processing problems. I think at a better rate than maybe what they were willing to do prior. You can see up in the top right corner, we had a friend that was out of energy for the day and Libby just sidled up and took a nap right with him. She is in, and we obviously have to be cognizant of allergies and things. We do have some dog-free zones in our building. So most of the classes are in Mrs. Bronson's room and Libby's part of lessons. I mean, she helps with self-control. She starts on every lesson, kind of coming through the rows, and the kids just get a little chance to, to pet her. You can see, we've got a couple of friends reading to Libby. Reading is a bit of focus at Great Lakes, in case you were wondering. And it's just another outlet to get some kids more comfortable practicing or reading fluency. These are some of the things, not all the things. Terry, am I missing anything?
I mean, it's so cute, like, the student is new there that's holding the book. And he came in as a pretty low reader, but he went to the library on his own and checked out a book that looked like Libby's. And just his book bag that he brings every day. He spends time. The other girl in the corner on the bottom, she made a paper machine of Libby and wrote a whole complete book. And this is a student that probably couldn't do that before, so.
Very motivated. I didn't think, as I talk about our challenge here at the end of this presentation with some of the attendance data, trying to use her as a way to get kids engaged and want to be there, it's just another tool. As I said, with the mental health piece, truly something we can do. The other thing I want to talk to is like, I said, starting the therapy dog program. I know Northern Lights is like working, they're in connection with Liberty K-9 Rescue Ranch down in Barnum. They didn't find a match the first time, but they're still working on that. And I know Alex Johnson at Cooper is looking at becoming a handler, so maybe we can get more of these animals out into our schools. It'd be great if someday we could have one in every school. You know, we had tried getting some kids in to talk a little bit about the impact, but we've got conflicts with sports and things. So could you go to the next slide? We did clip a two-minute video though, and maybe you can get a little sense of how the kids are impacted. Just make sure the volume's up. The main volume, probably. Can you, can you like, escape out of it and do the? Yeah, the bottom.
There it is.
Think we could do that. I would crank it. Push it and see if it works. I put it all the way to one hundred.
My name's Ava and I'm in fifth grade and my teacher's Miss Berman as well.
How do you like to interact with Libby?
The favorite, my favorite way to interact with Libby is in time when I have group with Miss Bronson and I just get to pet Libby and talk about stuff that's happening.
My favorite way to interact with Libby is when I sometimes come down for workshop.
How has Libby changed your stress level?
Sometimes when I'm having, like, a problem with a friend on the playground at recess or outside break, I just like to have a break in Miss Bronson's room and hang out with Libby and Miss Bronson. And it helps me all know. Um, when, if we have a substitute and I'm doing, like, I'm having a hard time, like, maybe paying attention or listening, and I come down here and then my stress level like changes.
Okay. If you could give one advice to the school district about having a therapy dog, what would it be?
I think we should get one for every class.
A lot of dogs in school, huh? Um. If you would, could tell the school district one thing about Libby?
Um, a thing about Libby is she's really sweet and like, I bet you if you were having like a super hard time and you were like super angry and you just came in here and pet it, pet her, then you probably, your mood would change really fast.
Kids like having her at Great Lakes? What do you think, if you had three words to describe Libby?
Cute, friendly, and caring.
Do you see a difference with the kids from last year to this year, having, having Libby part of our school?
Last year, if kids were upset, Miss Bronson would give them a fidget or something to deal with and she would help them. But now with Libby, she still gets to do her job, but she kind of has like a best bud to help her.
So I got to say this, Miss Bronson was doing more than giving kids a fidget, but, but Libby does. Bronson, your job. And I, and I said this to my staff, I've been very public about this, like, my favorite staff member at Great Lakes is Libby. I've been very clear with my staff. It's been really just a nice piece. As I wrap up this, the challenge that we're working to address right now, like I said, I've come here before with mental health. And mental health is still a challenge, but I think we're doing better than maybe what we would have been a year or two or three ago. One thing we did have that came up at Great Lakes was the attendance rate. So some of this had to do with the transition probably, but not all of it. Our attendance rate in twenty-three, twenty-four, our chronically truant percent of kids was eight percent. And that was fairly consistent going back a lot of years. And last year, it jumped to eighteen percent. So a ten percent increase in chronic absenteeism. So we've been doing some work this year on awareness and doing more proactive communication. We pulled those kids out who were on that list in twenty-four, twenty-five. We're trying to get that habitual truancy rate back down, hopefully below ten percent. And then our other piece with this, we can raise this subgroup's achievement just by getting them to school. We can hopefully continue to advance our ELA and our math goals. We do have a math goal. We're mainly focused on ELA, but I'm hoping that if we can do some work within this subgroup, we can really get to higher levels of learning for everybody. I don't want my last slide, one more slide. Oh, and then our continuous and performance report. If you click on that link, Ann, these are all on the district website, so every building has this. This is just kind of the actions we're doing for our continuous improvement plan. The ones highlighted in green are the ones that are complete. The ones in. Uh, the ones in yellow are ones that we're kind of in progress on. And then there's also some red ones that we still have yet to do. We're going to continue to add actions as we go and meet with our leadership team and such this year. It's, it's on the website along with the rest of them. Um, I think that's the last slide. Does anyone have any questions?
I guess just to comment, the four of us on here, we went to a workshop with Wasbe focused on truancy. And so there have been a lot of, and Amy was there with us. So just talking about what are some of the things the board can do, what, what is the root causes of it? What's successful in other districts and stuff? And so I'm, I'm very hopeful, you know, that you will be able to address that.
Well, the, the root causes, it varies so much depending on, you know, some families are like, oh, you gotta get your kid up and get them out the door. And other families are, you know, are lacking basic needs. So it really is getting, what we're trying to do right now, and I think Amy too, because she shared kind of a continuum she was working on, same thing we're trying to do at Great Lakes, is be more proactive. I'm trying to get, sorry if you're.
I think that was the problem.
Rollie, come here. What I was gonna say though is, uh, I, I think getting teachers involved a little more proactively, even in our edge of climate system. Kate Tesh had set, helped set up some thresholds. So the teachers are getting alerted like three absences in a quarter, six absences. And we have some pre-prepared messages and stuff for teachers. Cause we're not trying to be like threatening to the. County, that doesn't work. But it's like more just reaching out. And so we pre-prepared some language they can use. I mean, they can use their own language too. But you want it to be like, hey, is something going on like? Sometimes there is, and sometimes we can get them in to meet sooner before they, you know, they stop at when it's four absences and not wait till it's twenty absences, if you know what I mean. So yeah, good. And I'm glad. It's a good, I hope we can make some ground there. I didn't put anything in the financial responsibility spot because Dave, Dave's done a good job of that. I didn't want to step on his toes. Um, I don't know. Any other questions? Otherwise I just appreciate your time. And thanks for the board's support of trying to get this program working out and working for some of the nuances and, and things. Hopefully we're getting things set. So when other buildings get to the point, I've been sharing stuff like we've been doing to follow policy and things with the other principals. And hopefully that'll help expedite their processes if and when they get that chance. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Miss Bronson. Sure. Excellent.
And you don't have to show up next Monday, like it says.
Yeah. I'm gonna take the blame for that one. Totally was my mistake, but I'm glad we can get in tonight.
Uh, the other informational item, our Superior High School representative, Brandon and Veronica will be here next week. So look forward to hearing their report. Board committee reports, teaching and learning. Catherine?
I don't know why I'm on this though.
It should be Nick.
It should be Nick.
Steve, do we change?
No.
Did I get spurred?
I figured it was just an alphabet.
I'll take it. Make a note.
Anne, don't worry about it.
We'll find out who to blame later. For now, we just move on. Action items, none. Discussion items, none. Informational items, Jennifer Willoughby, Director of Child Education and Family Education. Update on Indigenous Peoples' Day and Native American Heritage Month. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm glad that I'm on our, um, our department because I have a lot to share tonight. It's been a busy month in October and November is going to be even busier. So we got a lot going on in Indian education that I want to share with you. First, we continue to collect forms. We've collected twenty J O M forms since the start of the school year. So that's been really exciting. Kids and families are turning them in, which is great. We had in, in October on Indigenous Peoples' Day, we took twenty four students to Duluth City Hall for the Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration. That was awesome. It was really great. They had, um, they had speakers, they had drumming, smudging, a round dance. And then we took kids out to lunch after on their way back. So that was excellent. And the kids were fantastic. Um, we had a family night that evening also. We had about fifty people who came, which was a great turnout for the first one of the year. And we had Ojibwe language. We had like language games and things, learning Ojibwe. We had crafts, traditional foods, drumming, dancing. We had some of the kids get up and start dancing, which was fun to see. And then I also shared a resource guide for staff for Indigenous Peoples' Day, filled with videos and articles, things like that. And similar to what I shared last year. November is Native American Heritage Month, so I shared with you your turquoise ribbon. All of the staff will be receiving these, so I'm going to be stuffing mailboxes later this week so that they have them. And again, I'm sharing a resource guide for staff, our learning, we choose kind of a, there's a theme each year to go with Native American Heritage Month. So the theme this year is really focusing around learning about boarding schools and the intergenerational trauma that Native people still face today. And so that's kind of the focus of the resource guide. That resource is, I try and include information in there that really you could share with all ages. So I have some read alouds and some children's stories about boarding schools. And then there's obviously articles and things and videos that the older kids can watch. And so my hope always is that teachers will share a little bit of something throughout the month. Native Spirit Week is right in the middle of that, November tenth through the fourteenth. We did this last year for the first year and it was a really big hit, so we're gonna do it again. Uh, we have dress up days for each day of the week. So Monday is Native Ally Day, so we're encouraging people to wear their medicine mill colors. Tuesday is Red Day in honor of MMIW. Wednesday is Orange Shirt Day for residential boarding schools and recognizing that every child matters. Thursday is Dress Your Best, so we're going to encourage students to wear their ribbon skirts, beadwork, galia, whatever makes them feel comfortable. We have quite a few students now have ribbon skirts and ribbon shirts that we've been making with them. So that'll be fun to see how and about in those. Um, and then Friday is Rock Your Mops. So wear your moccasins. And we'll celebrate with drumming at the high school that, that day during lunchtime. We'll also be tabling at the middle school and high school throughout the week. So we're gonna, last year we were at the high school three days. This year we've decided to expand to the middle school two days. So we have games and activities. They can come to engage with us and just kind of learn a little bit more about whatever it is our theme is for that day. And then of course we always have candy and stickers and buttons and pins and fun swag for them to grab. And then, let's see, uh, that week during Native Spirit Week, we're gonna have a Native feast and game night at the middle school on Thursday, the thirteenth. We'll be feasting our drum, our new drum that our students made. They just made a big powwow drum. So, um, so we, we need to feast that. So we'll be doing that along with enjoying a meal. And then we have some traditional Native games that we were able to pick up last year at one of our conferences. So that was really fun to talk to the man who owns that company and make a connection there. And so we purchased some very traditional Native games that we'll be teaching families and students. So should be a good time. In addition to that, we apply for a grant each year called the Native Pathways Grant through the American Indian College Fund. And we received four thousand dollars for that grant this year. That money goes towards helping students kind of expand and explore what their options are for college, college options. Um, Native scholarships, researching tribal schools, things like that. In addition to that, we also really focus on helping kids complete their FAFSA forms. So our first event will be Wednesday, the fifth of November. Uh, in the evening, we'll have a FAFSA evening and college info night. So I'll have information there about the American College Fund. They have a lot of great resources that they provide through that grant. And so I'll be sharing that along with really trying to get kids and families set up with FAFSA and get them ready to go. And we always have some, again, some swag to give away for that. We've got sweatshirts and gift cards and things like that. And then the second part of that is I always try and do lunch and learn events because not everybody can come in the evening. And sometimes the kids, it's easier for them to meet with me during the day. So I have three, three Tuesdays, Thursdays in November, the eighteenth, twentieth and twenty fifth. That I'll be meeting with students during the lunch hours. And so I keep them for the whole, for all three lunch hours. But they come and they eat their lunch with me and then we kind of talk through all of that. And they, last year, the group that came to meet with me, I didn't do it until the spring last year for the first time. But the group that I met with last year, they all left with great information about how to, kind of all the parts and pieces for applying for college. So what do, what do I need for letters of recommendation and who would be a good choice to ask? When do I need to do that? What are transcripts? A lot of kids don't even know what those are. So we talked about what that is and why they're important. We talked about, you know, obviously creating a good strong resume, writing a good personal statement, things like that that they would need to, to know and be familiar with and comfortable with when applying for college. And we got them all set up with FAFSA to at least get started on that part. So that's what Lunch and Learn is. We'll offer more of those throughout the year too, but this will be the first one for the year. Um, and then additional upcoming events that we've got going on. The high school drum club students are going to be making hand drums on October thirtieth. So when they don't have school and our staff are in professional development, they'll be doing that. And we also have beading graduation caps, jingle dresses and another ribbon shirt event happening in December. So we have to get ready for our powwow in the spring. That's all I got. Any questions for me?
Jen, can you explain what a J O M form is and where the group gets funding from?
Yes. Uh, J O M is Johnson O'Malley and five oh six form is for our Title VI grant. So we have two separate grants that we can tap into to receive funding for our students and our families. We have them in our office and we try and push them out through every communication we have. We also have sent paper copies out to the students this year and tried to get them directly into backpacks and folders and things to get as many of those back as we can in order. So J O M funding qualifications changed about a year, two years ago, maybe. Students used to have to be a, a very strong percentage of Native blood to quantify or to qualify for J O M funding. Those regulations have changed a little bit, so now it's very similar to Title VI qualifications. You have to be a tribal member yourself. You have to have a parent who's a tribal member or a grandparent. And any of those scenarios work. And we have worked with families and students to get their tribal numbers. If they don't know that, we can sometimes contact the tribe on their behalf. Or we can give them a contact. Some tribes don't let us contact on their behalf. So then we, we kind of help navigate those situations as we need to. But then once we receive the J O M forms, they all have to be verified also. So we have to then send them to the tribes to get them verified on that end so that we can then receive funding. So it's kind of a long process. We just continue to collect them. And then each year in the spring, we turn in as many as we have. And the count for J O M is like, I don't know, I think early September, like September tenth or fifteenth or something. So whatever we have by the end of the school year is what we can count for J O M funding.
I just want to say I really appreciate the vibrancy that you and the, the parent group and the students have really brought to the, the program. And I've, I do have two questions. One is how much of our local history is incorporated in, in some of the programming, just because I haven't been there? Um, and then I know, Crystal, I brought this up to you and I think it's been shared with you too. But maybe a little over a year ago, there was a curriculum review. And so I'm just wondering if, if that's something in the next couple of years that would be a project we could have our district do?
We're actually working on it and I was gonna.
Oh, already? Really? Oh, my gosh.
I have a lot of stuff on this already.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for asking. We are, um, we did connect with teachers and, um, and grade level teams last year to kind of collect some information, make sure that the information we had collected was as accurate as possible. And then next week or this, I don't even know what week it is, this week for staff development. Um, I'm meeting with the middle school team. We're going to complete the self-assessment, which was put out. Yep. Um, so we're going to start with the middle school team and kind of collect some information from them. And again, just re-verify that what we have on our document is accurate and current information. Just to kind of get a handle on where the gaps are, if there are any, or what the needs are from teachers for additional support or learning. Um, and then we have plans in the works to meet with the fourth grade social studies teachers, whoever wants to be a part of that in meeting and talking about that. And also the eleventh grade teachers. So those are kind of the grade levels that we're targeting. Because those are the grade levels that it's, and curriculum that is consistent across the grade.
Right. The Medellin Island Museum or La Pointe Museum has added some new exhibits. And so I'm not sure the, when they officially open, but some of the historians there just, it, it visited it this summer. And it's just, um, yeah, you just always learn, learn something new and they really renovated it from where it used to be. And so I, I just was thinking that'd be another really cool opportunity to learn about the local Ojibwe culture in this area.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all. Personnel negotiations. Mr. Nichols.
I have one action item. Administration recommends approval of the November twenty twenty five new hires and separations report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Quiet month, Molly. Lot of spare time.
Still hiring for some jobs.
I think that's as empty as that sheet has been.
I know.
Yeah, that's great.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. No discussion items, no information. That's it.
You're much more efficient than Mr. Nichols.
Yeah. I'm right, I'm right here.
Budget and insurance. Now Catherine?
I have one action item. It's gifts, grants and bequests. And administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in October twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve. Second.
Want to share?
Well, thanks, Nick. Excellent. Thanks to everyone.
And any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any ayes? Okay, motion carries. Uh, discussion items, I have none. Informational items, always the same, fund ten revenue and expenditure preliminary reports. David, anything further you want to share with us?
Wow, was David. The numbers should hope match? Yeah, they do. So these numbers match with what they just put up there. And that was the, uh, now we'll get into it. Job.
That's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Policy and rules. Shelley?
I have one action item tonight. The committee recommends the approval of resolution twenty five dash zero eight. Requirement of nomination papers, school board positions.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to note that this is a yearly requirement that the school board must undertake and make sure that we've got all the information going out, ready to go, December-ish, Anne, I believe, right?
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. I have no discussion items and no informational items.
Thank you. Legislative Committee, Laura.
That's me. So, I'll just read from here. The Senate has scheduled first floor actions for the first time since the budget, including some educational bills. The ones relevant to us is the Senate was in session on October fourteenth to hold a floor session, their first since early July. The agenda for the day included three different bills that impact K-12 school operations, including two that if passed will proceed to the governor for a signature. AB two, which generally prohibits cellphone or personal device usage during instructional time. And I just want to say that Amy had given us a heads up about that and what our policies will look like and how we'll manage that if it passes, and which will include some adjustments. And then, AB five, which requires school materials to meet available for inspection by district relevance, or residents, rather, that is something that we already do in our community. Folks are welcome to come look at any of our school materials at any time. They're open to the public, so I'm not sure what the purpose of that is. Were previously passed by the Assembly back in February. We also have, there's a blog, I'm guessing that's from Wasbe. The Senate will also take up SB one thirty-six, which will allow additional backup lights to be installed on school buses. David, anything about, is that attached with money? Are you aware of?
Of course, there is, but we can use it.
Yeah, you would know, right?
Of course, we've paid to perform, right?
Yeah, all right. And that concludes the Legislative Committee informational item.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. Our next meeting is next Monday, November third, beginning at five P.M. right here in this room. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.